I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Hastings School Board on June 14, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Treasurer Davis, could you please take attendance?
Absolutely. Director Dresley.
Here.
Director Zuzik.
Present.
Vice Chair, Mom.
Here.
Chair Hedin.
Here.
Treasurer Davis here. And Director Beisel. Thank you.
All right, thank you. This time, I would like to ask everyone who can stand to do that, remove your caps. We may not have a flag in this room anymore. We're gonna, we're gonna face the place where it usually is and do our pledge of allegiance. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for your flexibility for those who are not in person. Just about everything but the chairs have been removed from this room. So it's a little bare. This time, I would accept a motion in a second to approve the agenda.
So move Davis.
Second, Zuzik.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. We're gonna start our special meeting tonight with an information on approval of the existing operating levy, and I believe that will be led by Superintendent McDowell.
Thank you. All right, so the one topic on tonight's agenda is the levy renewal. And so we're gonna flow through a couple, just a couple of slides to make sure we're on the same page, both for the public and for the school board as we roll through this evening. So the reason we're here is because the recent legislative session now allows school boards to authorize a renewal for an operational levy that's already in existence. They can do that by vote. They're required, a school board is required to do that with written resolution. And then they have to hold a public meeting that allows for public testimony. So most people are used to us doing truth and taxation. This is roughly the same format tonight. So usually with truth and taxation, Jen Subert gives a big presentation on where we are with upcoming taxes, and then we have an opportunity, you'll remember, for public to speak, and then the board has a little bit of a discussion, but takes a vote on a resolution. The actual statute, Section 126(c)(17) or (9(b), just outlines what exactly needs to happen, which I just summarized. And as a reminder to our folks at home and to the audience here, Hastings Public Schools has two operating referendums. And so the operating referendums are for learning is typically how we categorize them. The referendum we're speaking about tonight is the authority number one. It is worth $670.70 at its expiration. This was a...
It's a per pupil.
Per pupil, yeah, per pupil. It's approved, it was approved by voters originally in 2013. It was approved for 10 years. It includes an annual inflation adjustment based on statutory inflation factors. It expires after fiscal year 2324. So it would be up for renewal this November, which means we would receive funding through fiscal '24. So as a reminder, a fiscal year ends with that last number. So fiscal year '24 ends 2024. And so that's the timing of it. And this authority generates approximately $3 million in annual revenue. So without approving this, either by board vote or going out to the voters, whichever one, we would need to come up with $3 million that we would no longer have. And so it's a very important piece of the two authorities. You can see the second authority there, but I'm not gonna explain that one because that is not what's on the resolution for tonight, and that would be out for 2027. The school board at that time could do exactly the same thing with that one. As a side note, these abilities for a school board to vote to renew an existing operating levy only applies to operating levies, does not apply to a bond, does not apply to a technology or capital projects levy, it would only be for an operating referendum. One of the big questions that many have is what is an impact? What is the impact? So right now, the existing levy costs a homeowner of a $275,000 home approximately $176 a year. Renewing this existing levy, this first question, would generate no new taxes. And could someone throw up the tax impact schedule for me? Please.
No, because we don't have...
We'll work through it. There we go. And so we wanted to show this slide. People have been paying attention to the Ellers presentations, recognize the blue and the orange and all of that. What we're paying attention to across the, across that first box... I'll wait till you're holding it still. Can you scroll it down just a bit, please? Right there. Sorry, up, up. Keep going, keep going, right there. Okay, thank you. So what we're looking at here across this box is in 2024, that expired authority, you see that $670.70 that I just talked about. The renewed authority would be for $670.70, which we just talked about. So there's a net change of zero. All right, so we have a net change of zero. So then the next question is, in the next box down, what does that mean on an individual's tax impact if the board votes to approve this? So please scroll down. And what you will see as it's scrolling down is in the far right column, they are all zeros, and that is for every estimated market value on the far left. So the estimated market value of homes even up to $550,000, it is a net impact change of zero. So right now, the reason we take time to explain this is essentially as a board, what you're taking up tonight is renewing exactly what is in place right now. It's the extension of the referendum levy that was approved back in 2013. It is not changing anything about that. It will, it will stay the same. It will also include the inflationary factor. So, Ms. Subert, did I miss anything that you wanted me to cover? Okay. With that, Board Chair, I will turn it over to you unless the board has questions at this time and allow for you to do your public testimony part of the presentation.
All right, thank you. First, we'll ask, are there any questions from members of the board? Director Mom?
So with this particular levy, it's $670.70 per pupil per year. I don't need the exact number, but on average, how much does it cost per pupil to, to keep them in school, to provide them the opportunities and education that we provide? I just wanna know what the impact is if this is not renewed.
Unless Ms. Subert can pull that number out of a hat, which she's gonna get close, what I will say is, on the large scale, think of it in terms of $3 million the district would not have, regardless of what it costs per student, we would need to come up with 300 or $3 million worth of reductions somewhere if we did not pass this. 5% of the general fund of 60 million.
Okay, I'm gonna start introducing the public testimony, but if Director Subert finds that number, we'll just, just enter, drop it in, drop it in in the discussion. So we're now gonna hear public testimony on this topic, the Hastings School Board's renewal of an existing levy. It would be renewed under its current status. So that's the same terms in terms of cost and length of time. I hope that everybody who was interested in speaking tonight saw the, the note that they should sign up with Ms. Garcia. If you didn't, we'll just take a minute or two. You can walk on up there and, and get yourself scheduled. Feel free to come up and add your name to the list. Our intent is to take people in the order that they signed up. So if you were glancing over her shoulder as she was typing your name in, that should give you a sense of where you are on the order. I do wanna cover a few logistics and expectation items. So I would like everybody who speaks to be aware that our meeting tonight is being livestreamed by Hastings Community TV on their Facebook page, and that my understanding is that afterwards, it would be archived on the Hastings Community TV YouTube page. So with regard to that, when you're speaking at the podium, please make sure that the light is green on your microphone. And so it shows up as green on the bar, a little face, and it shows up as green just below the, I don't know what they call that, the top. And you turn it on, yeah, super technical term, you just turn it on and off by tapping the bar, red to green. And we'll, we'll catch you if, by chance, because otherwise, it can't be picked up at all in the livestream without the microphones. And then with regard to our public testimony tonight, we have a single topic agenda, and that topic is the board renewal of the existing levy following the recent statutory changes. So that's, that's what we're gathering public testimony with regard to that. Our expectation is that all commentary will be civil and respectful. I don't feel like we need to say that aloud, but I'm gonna say it aloud, that's our expectation. And then to the extent practical, please state your point clearly and concisely. It certainly makes it easy, easier for us to follow that logic, and to the extent possible, don't be repetitive. Public testimony is us hearing the testimony, it's not a dialogue. So to the extent that it can be clear, that's helpful for us, and we would certainly appreciate that. In the event, because I know it can be anxiety-producing to speak at a microphone, in the event that somebody's testimony might veer from these expectations, it, there'll just be a gavel for a pause, I'll just hit my gavel one time, we'll just pause, everybody's gonna take a breath, and the speaker will reset their, their practices, get, kinda get back into whatever they intended to be saying, and then start again. So we'll just take a pause if we get off of those expectations and then keep moving. And I will call up... I was trying to read if Superintendent McDowell had something to add. I'll just call people up when it's your turn, okay? And our first speaker tonight is Monica Lucretz. Just for very clarity, Superintendent McDowell did remind me, and maybe I wasn't as clear as I intended to be, the board, this is not a dialogue, which means that the board's not gonna be able to comment back. It's a place for the public to speak to the board. So I just wanna have, I, I feel like maybe I wasn't as clear in my setting that expectation as I should have been. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Monica Lucretz. I live in Hastings, so I am a resident of this school district. I am here to share concerns and oppose the approval of the renewal of this levy that expires next, without vote or approval. Obviously, I don't have children in school, and as a retired person on a fixed income, of course, I am concerned about rising costs, including taxes. This doesn't mean that I do not support the children attending Hastings Public Schools. As a mother and grandmother, I understand the importance of a good, solid education. I supported and voted for the bond issue and the operating level levy that you just discussed, that was voted on in 2013, and was passed by a pretty good majority of the people of Hastings. At that time, I believed that the school district was doing a very good job of educating our children, and the test scores reflected that. In the past few years, unfortunately, I feel the schools are heading in the wrong direction. I realize that the COVID-19 pandemic is responsible for some of the decline in test scores. I think we can now all agree that the closing of the schools and not returning to full-time, in-person instruction for all students until the 2021, 2022 school year was a huge mistake that damaged students immensely. As experienced by my grandchildren, more emphasis now is on social justice activism under the guise of SEL, rather than teaching the basics of math, reading, and the history of this great country. The test scores speak for themselves, and it is not difficult to draw the conclusion when talking with my grandchildren about what they are currently learning in school. This special meeting to renew the operating levy without vote or approval speaks loud and clear, in my opinion, that you know things are not well in the district, and taking the operating levy issued to the voters might be a risk. Otherwise, you would have no problem taking your request to the, for funds to the voters for them to determine how their tax money should be spent by a one-vote advantage in the legislature. As you know, an education bill was passed that included a provision for school districts to renew expiring operating levies one time without vote or approval. If this board moves forward and approves to extend this levy for another 10 years without putting it to taxpayer vote in the fall, you will set precedent for future levies that will make them even more challenging to obtain approval due to this auto-renew option you now hold the power to pass. It is not an intelligent choice, in my view, since levies are earmarked for certain spending and circumstances change constantly. And the only ones that will suffer will be the children in the schools over your bad decision-making, in my opinion. Frankly, I am appalled and disgusted and extremely disappointed that you do not respect and trust the voters in this community to do the right thing, and instead are choosing to usurp our voting rights and take the easy and safe way to get what you want. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come in and share your perspective. Dawn Sawani.
Hi, my name is Dawn Sawani. I'm a retiree, living on a fixed income. I'm a former teacher in the district, retired in 2021. I have volunteered on every bond referendum that's gone before voters and every levy. I've spent countless hours, either in the form of writing letters, making phone calls, whatever was needed to help pass a levy, I've done. I volunteered on the 2013 levy. Since the state of Minnesota has decided that this is the way we're going to fund education, they're gonna pay their part, and then local people will decide on paying an additional part. And since you all know that to make $3 million worth of cuts would be painful, would hurt our curriculum, would hurt our teachers, would hurt our kids, we know we need this levy. It doesn't make sense to me to say, well, we'll put it out to the voters and then have a Herculean effort put out by a whole bunch of volunteers to get it passed when you have the power within you to pass it now. If voters don't like it, in the future, they can replace you. I mean, they still have choices. But this levy is critical for the funding of our education. We moved back to Hastings because of our schools. I graduated from this high school in '78, my parents did, I have a long history in this community, and we are strong because of our schools in no small part. So I urge you to go ahead, make that tough choice, but pass this as a group, and let's go forward with it. Since you have the power to do it, let's just do it. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time out of your evening to come in and share your perspective, Ms. Tracy Borash.
Hello. My name is Tracy Borash, and I am a parent of two successful college students who have graduated from Hastings High School and one now rising senior in the high school. My husband and I are both graduates as well. My mom is even a graduate from way back in the day. I'm also an avid volunteer with the Hastings Band Programs and the Show Choir for the last seven or eight years. So I know these kids. I know your kids. I'm here to express my support for the school board moving forward with the levy renewal as now allowed by Minnesota statute. As the public should be aware, the enrollment in our district is going down, yet the request for services and programs is either staying the same or going up. But with dwindling enrollment comes dwindling resources and dwindling funds. And yes, the same set of laws that has now allowed you to be able to renew the levy without a voter choice is the same set of laws that is now providing the school district with additional funding per each student. This additional funding is fabulous, it's great. It will help pay for some of the extras that we need and that the students want. But the levy is $3 million per year over 10 years, which is the same as what we've had over the last 10 years, and upon which the school district has already come to rely. The amount of the increase from the state is not enough to cover the levy if we were to lose it. And those extra funds should be used for new programs or new opportunities for the children. And with no corresponding increase in taxes, as a Hastings taxpayer and a parent, I think it just makes sense. You have the ability to make this tough choice and to do it tonight, and I encourage you to do so. We need these funds to support and educate our future. Pulling money from the schools will not result in higher test scores, they will lower. Pulling money has nothing to do with the curriculum that is chosen to be taught in our schools. If anything, it will have a massive impact on our ability to even keep things at the status quo. So I am fully in support of the board renewing the existing levy without voter approval. We need this for our children, we need this for their future. Thank you.
Thank you for taking your time this evening to share your perspective. Suzy McQuaid.
That's great, okay. As she said, I am Suzy McQuaid, I'm a 1984 high school graduate of Hastings, three of my kids all graduated. I'm also a district employee. As a district employee for the last 15 years, I have seen firsthand the needs of our students. Believe me, there are lots of needs. To think that by not taking advantage of this levy that won't cost anything, that we could possibly have more cuts and lose more programs is very concerning. We're already short-staffed in, in my area of work, which is paraprofessional. Sometimes we're called PSAs, sometimes we're called ESPs. We've got lots of names, we wear lots of hats. We give our all to our students. There simply cannot be less of us or less of whatever we've got going here. Less is not going to work, trust me. As it stands, I've seen multiple teachers in paras provide basic necessities to students. We bring pencils, Kleenex, sometimes feminine products, snacks, clothing, all kinds of things. Not approving this levy will just cause more students to need more things. We've already cut music therapy and some social workers recently. That's really not what we need to be cutting in 2023. What else will be cut? I don't know. Hastings has long had a reputation of having wonderful schools. As a matter of fact, my parents chose to move here versus back into St. Paul, where we were from back in 1977 because of the reputation of the Hastings schools. I have worked with students who have come from multiple districts just to be here in Hastings. So I don't think we want to be, be cutting and having less. We want these people to come, right? We want our kids to succeed. Anyway, I think, I think I have to flip around my, there we go. 2023 is not the year to be making more cuts. The needs are far too great, and I believe the risk is far too great, far too high. Thank you.
Thank you so much for taking your time to come out tonight and share your perspective, Sarah Knoll.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sarah Knoll, and I'm a graduate of Hastings High School. I also have two graduates from 2017 and 2021. My kids had great opportunities to explore classes in their areas of interest and participate in many school activities. My son loved his industrial arts classes and sports, and my daughter, just the opposite, loved her honors classes, and she loved her arts and her show choir. They have now gone on to do great things in their careers because of their education and the opportunities that they had at Hastings. The reason I'm here tonight is to respectfully request that the board vote to renew the operating referendum versus putting it to the vote in the fall. I believe by renewing now, staff can focus their energy and time and resources on known operating budgets and working with our new school superintendent to have a great foundation versus spending their time on a campaign to try to pass a referendum and also working on contingency plans or what cuts might have to be made. No other government agency has to ask voters to raise taxes. So this is a no-brainer to renew since there are no increases to the taxes. Our schools and educators are amazing, and I'd like them to stay that way. If this referendum is not passed in the fall, it could be devastating to our district, our teachers, industrial arts honors, arts and sports programs. We need this referendum to keep our kids and school and our community strong. Thank you.
Thank you for taking your time this evening to share your perspective. Jamie Schuster.
There we go. Thank you. My name is Jamie Schuster, and I am a Hastings resident, and I have children that attend ISD 200, one that has already graduated last year, and one that is going to be a senior next year. I support public education. I am a child of public education. I think public education is extremely important. But as a taxpayer and a voter, when you look at passing things in the fashion that you are looking at to passing them without taking it to the voters, I do have an issue with that. that. You do sit here and say it will be no new taxes for taxpayers. And while true in the statement that you put up for next year, well, it wouldn't increase someone's taxes. Within there is the inflationary period, and this is over a period of 10 years. That does play a role, and it will increase taxes for that inflation. Whether or not it has been intentional, I've listened to several comments from this board about not wanting to put in effort or work. When you go back to the December board meeting, that really came through to me loud and clear. There was a very important vote that was being taken, and it was the sentiment to the board that we have to do this or we're going to have to do work. That is the message that I got as a parent and as a taxpayer. I think right now, this community, we are at a precipice. There's a lot of positive energy and excitement around the hiring of the new superintendent. And whether or not you know that, it is out there. I believe it will be a missed opportunity if you do not take that energy and use it to your advantage to do the work, engage the community, talk to them about how important it is for these levies, and get the voters of the community behind you so that we can pass a levy and get the funding that we need. To me, if you take the easy road, which is passing this levy tonight, you're not willing to do that work, and you will set a precedent for the future levies. As voters will remember, this auto-renewal option, and I'm pretty sure it will likely impact your ability to pass much-needed levies in the future because they will be needed. I do oppose you passing this. I do feel it's important, and I do feel like if you put it to the voters in the fall and you do the work, you can get the community behind you. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come out this evening and share your perspective. I'd like to ask, that's the end of the people on my signed-up list, but I want to ask if anybody upon reflection has been added or wishes to speak. Okay. I don't see any response from the public. I think we've heard the testimony that we're going to hear tonight. And again, in general, I want to thank everybody for taking the time to come and engage in the civil discourse and to do this work. Very much appreciate you taking that time. Excuse me, I'm just getting back to the right screen on my page. The next action item that we have, and this is the place through taking a motion in a second that would create our opportunity for discussion at the table. So at this time, I would entertain a motion in a second for a resolution to approve the existing operating levy, and I would consider that that resolution, the written document is attached in Board Book, and I would consider a resolution that waives the reading. The whole resolution is available for the public and has been available for the public to read. Is there a motion in a second?
I, Zuzik, I would make the motion to approve the existing levy and look forward to our conversation tonight.
Second, Dressley.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion, Zuzik, second, Dressley. And now I'd be interested in hearing any discussion with regard to the motion on the table.
Thank you. Just three thoughts have been bouncing around in my head for, well, since this became a possibility. And one is that as a former school administrator and now a school board member, I've many times publicly commented that, you know, we're not on square footing with our county and our city, which I take, you know, I'm not saying that they're not managed well, but they've been able to renew levies and increase levies at the board level or the city council level for the history of their existence. And schools are the only public entity that heretofore have had to go out and seek voter approval for passing levies and bonds through referendum. It is important for our constituents to know that this still doesn't put us on evil, or pardon me, on level footing with cities and counties because cities and counties can raise their levy or raise a bond without going to the voters. And that's not something that we can do. What we can do is one time renew a levy under the same terms that that levy has previously existed. And because this was a 10-year levy, we can renew it for 10 years. And because there was an inflationary factor built into it, we can recommend that it be approved with that inflationary factor. We're still not on level footing, but the legislature has seen fit, in their wisdom, to allow schools to do this because they recognize that there's been a problem in school funding around the pressure to pass referendum. And I appreciate that. And this is, that's the number one reason that I vote to support it. I will vote to support it. The second thing is I really appreciated the comment about engaging the community, and I think that that is, you know, we're going to have other opportunities to engage the community, this fall even. And I also believe that the inflationary factor that is built into the levy is likely to be outpaced by the increase in tax capacity, which means the per pupil unit expenditure that we're, revenue that we generate goes across the property value of the entire district, the businesses and the communities, personal, individual, family properties. And historically, the cost for a home for a levy has gone down, and I don't anticipate that that will change. I believe that the cost over the next 10 years will continue to go down. It won't go up because of the inflationary factor. And the reason for that is because the tax capacity has been growing at such a steep rate in Hastings Public Schools. So, thank you.
Are there any other comments? I would, okay, Director Davis, thank you.
Just real quick, Director, thank you, Chair Hadeen. I will note that one of the things that I reflect upon is I've actually even watched some of the mindset of this board respond to the surveys that we put out in terms of the vast majority of the community that have already indicated through the survey that they're in favor of this particular piece. So I do want to note that I've even watched the minds of our own body here. Think about that and consider what the majority of the committee would like to see and that was reflected in the surveys that we put out.
Is there additional comment? I would like to say thank you to both Directors, Zuzik and Davis. They kind of covered a couple of points that I was, would want to make during our discussion time. We were doing the work necessary to go to a voter-approved levy, and with that was a community survey where we found that 70% to 80% support, anticipated support, which I do think has informed a number of our board members about just being in this position and having this discussion. I would also like to point out that we had a discussion with regard to anticipating this resolution at our work session in May. I'm losing slight track of the months. And we did have a unanimous support around the table to move forward with this discussion and recognize the value of approving this levy at that time. And then to just expand on the point that Director Zuzik made, I think it is very likely, and those who have been following the work of the school board know that we're in the process of considering a capital improvements levy, and we've had one long discussion about that at the table. We heard that in our elders' reports, and we've heard that in our reports with regard to the community survey, so that we've been very transparent about the fact that there is a potential that we will have to go out for, we will choose to go out for an additional request. To Director Zuzik's point, this is not an increase. This is a base. And that we would look forward, should we choose to do that, we would look forward to actively engaging the community in that discussion and telling that story. So those are the three points. And then the last one for me is I too have worked on our bonds and our levies, and I've done that phone calling, and I've done that letter writing, and I've done the pamphleting, and I've done the communication, going to groups and talking. And that is a significant resource requirement from our community. And I would rather see those resources because I think there are those resources that support the schools' work and spend their time and energy should we choose to do a capital improvements levy and integrating our new superintendent into the district and developing our next three-year work plan and continuing with our innovation teams at secondary. We have so, so much valuable work at the table for the board and administration and staff, and I want to use our resources wisely. And that's why I would anticipate voting in support of this resolution. Is there any further discussion tonight? Hearing none, we have a motion on the table to approve the resolution authorizing renewal of the existing operating levy in accordance with Minnesota Statute 126(c)(17) subdivision 9b and to waive that reading. We do have a practice of roll-call voting for resolutions. If I remember correctly, the motion was made by Director Zuzik and seconded by Director Dressley. Thank you. At this time, I would ask Clerk Bysel to take a roll-call vote. Thank you.
Director Zuzik?
Yes.
Director Dressley?
Yes.
Director Bysel?
Yes.
Director Davis?
Yes.
Director Mumm?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Chair Hadeen?
Yes. All right. That's the single action item on our agenda for tonight. With that, I would call for a motion in a second to adjourn.
So move Davis.
Second, Mumm.
It's always a race to second that adjournment. It's tightest vote of the night. We have motion, Davis, just second, Mumm. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A post-name sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.